Never had it.
It is six oh one on Tuesday, February the fourth first. This is Robert Stevenson. We are about to open the South of Cali Granville Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So much. Thanks.
And show hands to favor open the meeting. The record show the motion passes six zero zero. Right. Chairman, can I go ready stand for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and justiciable.
Were they needed at all or not? I don't know. We have to start over if Eric didn't do it. All right, Secretary's report. We have the minutes from our meeting from January the 11th. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So much. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Got any questions? Can I get a show of hands to accept the minutes? Record show the motion passes six zero zero. Lawrence?
I think they're all done.
Yep, we're all done. So everybody gets paid. It's good. Super Teller, do you have any correspondence this week?
I do not.
Public comment. You have nobody here except for guests, so we're going to forego public comment tonight. So we are on track for the record and Marissa is not here yet. You know what? It's okay. We're going to do an audible. How about we do the student by to report after our educational presentation? They really have a problem with that? All right. Okay, we'll do that. So first off, we're going to go to education presentation care solace.
Carisolus.
I'm sorry. Did you guys listen to this?
Yeah.
Oh.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Give me one second. My screen's ready for you. Thank you for having me tonight. Really happy to be able to join and share a little bit about what we're doing for you guys and how we're helping. So let me jump in. I'll just do a really quick presentation about who we are, what we do, and then just show you the platforms that we've been using. So let's see. Okay, so in case you haven't heard of Carisolus yet, we are a mental health care coordination service and our mission is to calm the chaos of the mental health care system. So we're currently partnered with over 4,000 schools across the United States. We work in both K-12 and higher ed. And we are currently reaching about 3 million students. But when a district is partnered with Carisolus, we are not only available as a resource for students, we're also available for student families as well as all staff and staff families. So our aim is really universal access within your school community. With that, we're currently reaching around 12 million people. As I'm sure most of you may know from your positions there and just in the roles you're in, navigating the mental health care field as it stands right now can be really chaotic and overwhelming and exhausting. All these barriers can pop up that prevent families from getting connected to the care they need, whether that maybe be the stigma of reaching out for help in the first place, language barriers, navigating insurance can be really difficult, making sure a provider takes your insurance. And even once you find a provider, dealing with things like capacity issues or wait times. And so our whole goal here at Carisolus is to break down these barriers for families. We want to hold their hands throughout that whole process and bridge this gap in between a person who needs help and a provider who is willing to help. And so the way we do that is through these pathways of care coordination. All roads are going to lead to our care companion team here in the center. And so this care companion team, this is our 24/7 multilingual team that is here to be the workhorse for your school community. So they are going to call out to providers on the family's behalf. They'll wait on hold. They'll double check that that provider takes the family's insurance and then they can help the families in the appointment setting process. And so they can be reached out to directly via phone, email, or video chat. Again, that's a 24/17. They can also be leveraged through one of the two Carisolus platforms here that you'll see on the side. And so I'll show you both of these here in just a minute, but Care Loop, this is an internal platform, so only available for your administration team and your mental health staff. And this is where those groups are able to submit referrals to our team or what we call a warm handoff. And when they do so, our care companion is connected with that family. We help them through that process of getting connected to a provider and your team is able to follow along with that progress as we help them through the process. Our second platform, we call Care Match, and this is a district-facing self-serving website. So every stakeholder in your community has access to Care Match. It's a completely anonymous way to search for local providers and our care companion team can be leveraged through Care Match as well. And so just to give you a quick kind of view of what these look like here. So this is a dashboard here that your, again, your mental health staff, so you know, your school counselors, social workers, psychs, therapists, nurses, and then your administration team, any superintendent, principals, assistant principals, et cetera, can access this Care Loop dashboard. This is where referrals are submitted to our team. They're all tracked in here and logged and we have a timeline for each student, so we're able to pull up case details. We don't store any confidential information in here, but it's a really nice tool for your team to use to be able to know that these families are being taken care of. And so we keep you in the loop the whole way from the time that we receive the case to when a care companion starts working with the family. We let you know when we've done a screening, when we're calling providers, when we find provider matches, and when we do finally schedule that appointment. And so again, your team can rest assured that we're making these phone calls, we're making these connections, and we're holding this family's hand throughout that process. And so this is the dashboard. There's also live utilization data. This is available for all administrators, so they're able to access data for their specific school sites. District-wide data is available, of course, for superintendent, assistant superintendents, et cetera. And you're able to find really valuable information in here. We track the demographics that are reaching out for help in terms of gender, age, and ethnicity. We help what, or excuse me, we track what they're reaching out for help with on the substance use side and the mental health side, as well as who is helping in terms of providers and insurance. And so really valuable information, it really helps to paint a picture of what the mental health landscape looks like within your specific school district community there. In here, we also have access to a huge resource center where we provide a ton of customized messaging, marketing materials to your staff. We have monthly templates, we have flyers, we have postcards for family, website content, social media content. All of that lives here in the dashboard. And so this is one option for your teams to use. Your community there, they all have access to what we call Care Match that I'm showing you here now. And so that means every student, staff, and family in your community can access this site from the comfort of their own home. You have a proprietary link. Yours is carisolus.com/stgrrsd. And through here, anyone in your community that is seeking care can get linked up with our team if they so choose by clicking book appointment. It pulls up our team's email, phone number, and video chat link. Again, anyone from your community can reach out, for example, and say, hey, I'm a classroom teacher in Saltwick, Tolan Granville. I'm struggling with anxiety. Could you please help me find a provider? Or I am a PE teacher in Saltwick, Tolan Granville, and my son is struggling with depression, anxiety, et cetera. And so anyone can reach out. We're going to open up that case for them, help them find a provider. They can also utilize this website themselves if they want to do that. And this is a completely anonymous way to seek care. And so when people reach out to us directly, it's a wonderful opportunity for them to get that assistance. But because they're reaching out directly, no one in the school has access to that, and so they kind of can keep that little bit of privacy. They can get that help they're needing without having to get the schools involved. And so just a couple other things to note here. We do work with families regardless of insurance, so private, public, no insurance, doesn't matter to us. We want to help everybody for families with no insurance. We'll find them sliding scale out of pocket options, hopefully free options if available. But again, we're just trying to break down all those barriers. We want to help your families get connected to the help that they need. And so that is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, concerns about our service, kind of how we work or what we do here.
Any questions for Ash?
My questions might be more for administration rather than for Ashley itself. My questions are simply, are we as a district paying for this service? And also, how are we as a district advertising this? And so that everybody who in benefit knows about it, knows about the anonymity component of it and all that. I think that it's super, super important for it to be effectively utilized, that it needs to be effectively added.
You have responses to that?
Well, I know that we, I was at a meeting on Monday and already our school adjustment counselors have already started working with Carisolus. We are going to be sending out messaging templates. There are some messages and template letters that we're going to be sending out to families. But again, we really wanted to bring it to the school committee first before we bring it out to the community so that you're aware of it, so people come to you and ask you about it. But Amy's going to send something out on social media and we'll do a blackboard.
We'll have it on the website, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And is this, I guess Ashley probably would know this too, but is this the, from a fee perspective, is it a flat fee or is it dependent on number of clicks or utilizations or signs up that?
So we think it's based on the size of the district, number of students?
Yes.
Right?
Okay, so Ashley, is it fair to say that once we've made this commitment to move forward, it is absolutely imperative that everybody knows about it because whether they use it or not, the fees are already paid, correct?
Correct. So it's a price per student fee. That's how it's worked out and I'd have to pull up, let's see, your specific contract, but typically it goes through the school year. And so yeah, once you know you've paid for it, you want to make sure everyone knows it's available and here and up and running and open for them to use. So like, sorry, go ahead.
I was asking, do you have any other districts in this area that you're currently working with?
So we do. I work with all of our Northeast districts. Let me see if I can get you a number here. So I'm give me one sec here. I'm actually originally from Massachusetts as well. I grew up in Easton and so it's been really nice for me. I get to work with all of our East Coast accounts. Let me give you a number. One second here. Let's see, so we're in about we're in about 16 Massachusetts, excuse me, Massachusetts districts right now. A lot of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, DC, kind of all over. And so kind of along these same lines, every time we partner with a new district, you know, we check in on outside providers they have relationships with. We include them in our database of providers. Our team has their own process for that as well, but it's really nice to kind of get to know the providers that you have relationships with as well, so that they're included if they haven't already been included in our database. I hope that helps.
Oh, sure. Steve, was this something that we budgeted for or was this?
I believe we're utilizing some grant funding for.
So this is some of the Easter funds?
It could be, sir. I don't know.
Perfect. Anybody have any other questions? Ashley, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very informative.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me and have a great rest of the night.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Next up, Powdermill School Water Dam, Mr. Presnell and Mr. Whitecand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I trust the committee is aware we had a pre-signing problem. While Superintendent would like happen to be away. She missed out on the initial part, the initial part of the call. So the weekend of January 16 through 18th was Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on that Monday. It was also forecast to be an extremely cold, cold weekend, kind of starting with Friday night. We monitor our building and manage our building temperatures through our building automation system. Additionally, we're expecting severe cold weather. We typically operate the heating systems on an occupied mode, so if rather than going into an unoccupied mode with the temperature be lower, by having the temperatures up high, if you did have an incident with some type of system failure, you're starting from a warmer, warmer climate in the building. Less event that you'll have a catastrophic type event. For a variety of reasons, Mr. Whitecand can explain those to to folks far, far better than I can. There's no indication that we had pipes or heat quotes that were in jeopardy freezing in Powdermill. Eric was monitoring the system over the weekend. He had the air temperature throughout the building was important sufficient to avoid ensure that pipes would not freeze. However, on the morning of Tuesday, the 18th, when the day custodian arrived after the long weekend, he arrived with significant flooding on the first floor here at Powdermill in the west wing of Powdermill Road. Immediately reached out to Eric who was getting ready to leave for the school. Eric dispatched some other staff to the, to the site and they determined or learned that it was actually flooding on second floor as well, pretty significant flooding. Ultimately, with a lot of phone calls back and forth between Eric, myself, Mr. Blotland, and Principal Carrier, we had came to the decision that we needed to cancel school for Powdermill students that day. Eric and his team immediately went into disaster recovery mode. They worked hard to get the water cleaned up. Deployed additional staff here to the building that assisted with that. Also determined that the leak was a first heating system coil that was located above the ceiling, second floor, all. So we had water raining down high levels of humidity. Building itself with water, warm hot water, maybe on the floor, on ceiling tiles. By way of the school's video surveillance system, which we looked at later, kind of determined that this probably happened some, started sometime on Sunday, Sunday morning. So roughly, probably closer to 8 hours was of water leaking out of, out of this pipe coil. We immediately notified our insurer, started a claim in our system. The insurance company dispatched an adjuster who came out here that afternoon, actually after visiting two other schools in in the area before he got to us. Eric and I determined that the damage was sufficient enough that we would need to engage outside help. So we got in touch with a restoration contractor who also arrived on mid-afternoon on, on that Tuesday. And immediately deployed, started again deploying some drying, dehumidification equipment. He also took advantage of the relationship we have with an environmental consulting engineer and industrial line genist to get him involved to oversee the various aspects of the recovery process. My experience is probably a wise decision to get somebody like that involved. They're dealing with these things. And they, they represent our interest in this and ensuring that, you know. All steps are being taken to remove load once you're from spaces and identify any material that may have been damaged. Eric, do you want to speak to the, the damage that, that resulted from the, from the water?
There was about eight classrooms that were affected on some level on the second floor and six on the first floor. We had water infiltration on the second floor into the sheet rock walls that were located on the exterior of the building. The water spent most of its movement on the floor. It came straight down in the hallway and then just propagated along the slab. That meant that anything absorptive that it touched, it drew the water into it and we had to be pretty hawkish in determining what had absorbed water because it's, it's really not readily apparent to the naked eye, what, what's wet and what's not and to what extent. So the second floor also suffered some serious damage to the, from the condensation. Steve mentioned that this was heating water, is 180 degree water that was spraying out. So when I arrived on the second floor and isolated the leak, finally, it was, you know, Florida in August, when I got up there, we were looking at, you know, 80 degrees and 85% relative humidity. And with the outdoor temperatures, all of the exposed metal surfaces such as window frames and roof pans, that that high humid, high humidity water condensed. So we, we had to remove numerous ceiling tiles that had warped from either the condensation or the condensation that rained down on them from above. But that was pretty much the extent of the damage on, on the second floor. The first floor suffered some sheet rock damage in the ceiling. Unfortunately, we have pipe chases that contain ducts in the front of every room towards the hallway and water infiltrated those pretty significantly in certain areas. So we had to remove quite a bit of sheet rock from that area. I'm jumping ahead of myself. I'll get to that. And then classroom materials that were stored on the floor or in the direct path of the water raining down were also affected. One room in particular had all of its built-in milkwork really just, just saturated. So it was, it had to be removed as well. So that's, that's kind of the extent of the damage. As far as the restoration is concerned, should we move along to that now?
Yeah, just all, all the demo has been completed and we're, we're at the point where we're just waiting for the restoration process to play the stuff.
Yeah, just one word. We did, like Steve's mentioned, we brought our, we brought our consultant in and using thermal imaging and digital hygrometers, we were able to identify with high confidence everything that, that was impacted by the water and either remove it or or dry it out if it was not something that, that could be removed.
Right.
Were we, Steve, were, Eric, were we successful in keeping the bottoms of those cabinets that we, that you guys put the holes in that they were looking on Wednesday? Were they, are they, were they able to stay?
With the exception of one room, yes.
The restoration contractors completing the estimate for the needed repairs, which has to be then reviewed by the insurance company and approved quickly. We're still targeting our initial communications to families has been that we anticipate reoccupying the space after the February vacation week. We still think that's possible, but a lot of things have to line up. It's always potential for contractor availability issues, material availability issues, potential weather delays. So we're doing what we can to ensure that, that we do stay to that date, but some of that's beyond our control. I, I do want to extend a ton of appreciation to the buildings and ground staff, you know, Eric and his team. Also, the town of Southwood officials helped facilitate the demo process to streamline that, to make, make that occur while school was in session. That helped. Mrs. Carrier's response to this event was fabulous. She immediately went to work on a plan to relocate students to available spaces. Obviously, the fifth graders to other spaces here in Powdermill, the sixth graders had classrooms at Southwood Regional School. Mr. Trammell and his staff graciously worked out a plan to accommodate the sixth grade students. The staff gave up their own, their own classrooms. Just can't say enough about the atmosphere of cooperation and teamwork that everybody that got involved in this exhibited. So special thanks to those folks as well. It's even impacted ancillary services like food service and transportation where people have had to pivot and kind of respond and react in very quick time. But everybody stepped up and we were able to get Powdermill students back to school all day. So it was quite, quite remarkable. So it's just nothing but appreciation for the cooperation, the patience that our families have provided and students have provided. And we're all deeply appreciative of that. Anything else that you care to add, Eric?
No. Oh, I'm just, I'm very pleased to say that we've been making really consistent progress towards getting this done in an effective and thorough manner. And I look forward to hopefully meeting the goal of getting our, our students back to normal as soon as possible.
I just had a quick question about the, so you said it started on Sunday morning, right?
That's what we believe. Thanks on the video.
And it was found one day.
It was found Tuesday.
So like a perfect setup storm. Do we, we typically don't have on certain schedules like that. We don't have the days where no one goes into buildings. Is that common? I'm just curious from the standpoint of if there was anything, I don't think there was anything we could have done really to stop anything or find out sooner, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I'll ask if somebody goes through the.
In years past, on a normal weekend, unless there was an event scheduled for the building, there would be no, no human traffic in the building. In recent years, the rec, Southwood Rec Center has not used the building on weekends like they used to. So you know, it's possible that if, if we had community use, somebody might have picked up on, on that. The long weekend, sometimes people don't tend to use it if they, you know, typically coming in on weekends, the long weekend might result in folks not, you know, they're not. Yeah, we rely on, we rely on, right, Eric was monitoring this thing all, all weekend because the temperatures were, were concerning.
So that was my question. So you know, like we, we have ways to monitor and obviously this didn't trigger our monitoring system. So my first question is the, the first heating system coil, how old was that to begin at?
New equipment since the renovation.
Okay, so that was a concern of mine. So do we have any legal or fiscal recourse with regard to that?
The, the, that matters in the insurance company's hands.
Okay.
So we're referring all of that to, to them.
And because these are new systems, is it possible that these are slightly flawed systems?
And what we connect it to the automated system?
And we could end up with a similar situation in the future? And then is there a way to somehow tie this system into our off-site monitoring system so that if, if something like this were to happen again, we would have a way on off-site monitoring?
All, all that is being, being addressed.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah. And also consideration of when we do get these extreme weather situations of scheduling, actually one custodian staff to come in, do a walk, building walk, build, building check. And, you know, obviously if there's any issues, report that up the chain to Eric.
Eric, were you, when we spoke on Wednesday, when I got a chance to come in for the tour, were you able to check those other I guess, units to make sure that that same sort of setup wasn't in the other units?
Yeah, so I, I consulted with a trusted HVAC technician guy I know that has 35 years of experience. He's been working for our district for most of those times. And his, his, his confidence was in the drawings, the original project blueprints and as-built drawings. So I spent, good afternoon, just going over the mechanical drawings that were submitted after the project, the as-bills. And I didn't find any other setups that, that would give me concern. You know, there was, it was a perfect, perfect storm of events that led to this failure as far as, you know, where the equipment was located in relation to the outdoors, various other things. So I, I went through the, the plans looking for something similar that would match, maybe have the same vulnerabilities. And I was unable at this point to, to determine anything that needs to be addressed right away. But I am going to have that reviewed by somebody who has a little Um but I am going to have that reviewed by somebody who has a little bit more um HVAC experience um than I do uh as far as uh commissioning these these new uh new systems. So uh as of right now, I don't see any immediate threats to have a repeat. Um obviously, it's something I'm watching very, very carefully. And and going forward, we will, we will have some more experienced guys uh check back on that as well as my own.
So on the as-built drawings that you were talking about, did you, did the unit that we had the problem with, did you see something on that as-built drawing that was that that was concerning, that would explain what happened?
Uh no, uh nothing, no smoking gun um uh thing was found on the drawing. I was just looking for um similar structures uh that sort of matched the same uh layout of of, you know, the 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 unit in question.
Okay, so there was nothing similar to the one where we had the issue and therefore we're reasonably confident that we won't have a problem?
I am, I am, I am, but like I said, I I I want to have somebody with a little bit more um, you know, day-to-day experience. You know, my my experience is on the management side of these things, not so much the service and installation of them. So like I said, I'm gonna have uh I'm gonna have somebody else with a little bit uh more time under their belt with these types of things on a day-to-day basis. Just check over my uh my opinion and make sure that that that's accurate.
Thank you, Eric, for your tremendous amount of time that has gone into this, unfortunately.
I'm just doing my job.
Anybody have any other questions for uh Mr. President or Mr. White Can? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. We have our guest speaker, Liz LaFond is here to give us a presentation on school committee rules and responsibilities.
Chair Stevenson, did you want to the students first?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Sure.
We can, we can, we can call an audible. Marissa, are you ready to, we're gonna backtrack the student advisory report because we getting part of this meeting.
So um and that has fortunately lost her voice. So the first semester ended this week and report cards were emailed out, will be emailed out this Friday. Students are excited and adjusting to their new classes and there's new encore classes for middle school this third quarter. We welcome the sixth graders into the school as pathways be prepared. It's been a smooth transition. And student council gave tours to the sixth graders um like they would if they were still in Paterson, so I can see the high school. And they started using the oxygen, the auditorium and fan room. Um mock trial teams had their third and final trial of the season today. Students completed eye-ready ELA and math benchmark assessments. The SRS spring musical is too simple to musical and auditions are Wednesday and Thursday. And student council is putting on, it's called Coco for Our Cause on February eighteenth, and students are able to donate to four different local organizations to get on campus. And wrestling is senior night tonight, and as winter sports are coming to an end, be sure to get to home game if they're not in the eleven. Spring court registrations open and seniors are placing their backpacks.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Liz, you're on. We've got, there's a podium there if you want to use that. You're find where you're at if you want to just go from where you're where you're sitting.
I'm comfortable right here. You all are comfortable in that. Everybody's just fine. All right, great. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Um it is good to get out of the house and see real people because it's been a very long time. So um we're here to talk generally about roles and responsibilities and educational leadership uh from the school committee's perspective. And you know, first and foremost, you are the legislature for the public schools here in Southwood College in Grandville. And as such, you have some very specific roles. Mainly to establish rules for the district, which is also known as district policy. Um I know that in the conversations I've had with Rob recently, we found out that it's been some time since the committee's taken a look at policy. Um and that's gonna be some work you all likely will dive into, just to be sure you're all up to date with laws and regulations and that. Things in your manual are the kinds of things you want to have there. Um also importantly, you hire your chief executive superintendent for the district. The budget originates and you set the budget process. Budget process originates and you set the process. The budget recommendation would come typically from the superintendent to the committee where your work will be here. Um you also look at the budget um and expenditures through signing warrants and periodic financial statements set that will come across your desk. Um there's some other special duties that are set by state law, including evaluating the superintendent, studying the school calendar. Um you review school improvement plans. And you have some, you have advise and consent on certain positions in the district. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we move on. Um you'll see as we go through this presentation, there is, there's uh, you'll hear sort of the same themes running through a lot of slides. And importantly, you need to remember that now that you're elected, there's a separate unit that we do from candidate to school committee member, but you are now a public figure. People who once interacted with you as a parent or a next-door neighbor now see you first as a member of the school committee for your own community. You probably have plenty of those um or experience those interactions at the supermarket or wherever you might meet people in the community, right? It's a different sort of interaction that you now have with people. And people are more willing to talk with you that might not have spoken with you before. So more on that. Um generally, uh meetings, uh meetings are a place where you take action um on items, areas in the district where you have part you. Um you hear things like, uh tonight was a great example to get educational reports and understand sort of the services that are being provided to the kids in your district. Um those are all things that you need that on when you do the superintendent evaluation. You'll have a better understanding of the services being provided um tailored to your students' needs, like quite to my presentation, for example. And as the municipal legislation for schools, you share a balance of power, right? With your chief executive officer and with the municipal boards and other bodies that you deal with in your communities. Um and you are the employer of record for collective bargaining and retaining legal counsel. Now, when I say employer of record, um you negotiate with, you set parameters of, you know, contract parameters, um you deal with the money aspects of it. And from there, there the superintendent, staff becomes the superintendent's employees. Um we can go to the next slide, Amy, please. And you will see as we go through the slides, we're gonna talk a lot about our budget, policy, evaluation and programming for kids. Um and the focus is always going to be on how the school committee can have a positive impact on student achievement. That's your most important function. Yes, please. So there's research. Um and we meet as a team at MASC and we talk about uh sort of the newest uh readings that we can do and um communicate with our colleagues across the country. Because there is research that shows us what makes an effective school committee. And most importantly, that effective school committees have a positive impact on student achievement. Student achievement, um I don't need test scores. I mean, um the, what you define as a district based on the values of the community um and how your students are interacting at school, the services that that they're able to receive um and how valuable ones are to the kids uh as they move through the grades in your school and then you know, you know, the base that you set. Effective school committees maintain a focus on student achievement through your meeting agendas, as we just noted. Presentations and discussions are important topics. Um I did see a couple of your other meetings, um because I'm a little geeky like that, my colleagues laugh at me, but I do spend many evenings watching school committee meetings. I don't know who you are, because I've seen how you operate, right? You have had some real, some some meeting presentations, um and you've asked some good questions. So effective school committees, we know, also set goals and they monitor progress. Now, whether those goals are for yourself as a committee or whether you are looking at periodically um how your district is meeting the goals in your strategic plan um is is how that would work. Some committees like to set their own goals and those goals, best practice would be to set goals that support that strategic plan or another districts, they call it a, you don't have a district improvement plan here, so um that's an amazing first step, right? You're you're planning strategically to continue to grow and do better for your communities. Um and you engage in self-governance, which means that you take time from time to time to step back and look at how you're functioning. And are you doing the set, the things you say you will do? For instance, in your strategic plan or in any goals you set for the committee that will support the work in that strategic plan. Basically supporting your administration and your teachers to support students. Um and you will, from time to time, engage in professional development and growth, learning opportunities. Uh whether it's a book study or whether it's attending chartering course or other learning ones that MASC offers, whether it's hearing from your own legal counsel in particular areas um or however you find uh professional learning is valuable to you. Next slide, please, Amy. The big picture. Your roles and responsibilities again focus around setting goals for the district or understanding the goals that are set through your strategic plan that exists. Um and it's well laid out. You can see this sort of benchmark set out to be that in order to know that you're making progress. Um there may be times that your superintendent comes back to you and says, because of this, we need to adjust that. Let's talk about it. Um you set policy for the district and it looks like your policy manual was last reviewed um in two thousand and five. So it is time um to decide how you want to look at that to be sure that um if you have a coordinated program review or, well, whatever reason, Desi calls your number, um and you all are getting put under the microscope. Um a lot of policies that were last looked at in two thousand and five are gonna be liked. Um and when we talk about personnel, typically what we're talking about is those relationships that you build um with your administrative staff, uh the relationships that you're able to build here at the committee through these presentations. And there are certain positions that you do have advising consent authority over as for some reason I didn't list here, but I'm gonna tell you what they are. There is assistant or associate superintendents, there's your school business manager, um special education director, school physician, which many districts have one sort of for decades before they find themselves changing. And the law also says you have approval over school nurses. Now, when I say advising consent, you probably know that means that the recommendation comes from the superintendent. Um and you uh may either approve the recommendation or not. But the law also says if you do not approve the recommendation, you need to provide a written explanation as to why. Knowing Jen and her background in personnel, I'd say that she probably keeps the school committee involved at one level or another. When these positions are vacant, she would form the public process in salon. Talking under a mask, it's not as easy as it looks, you all know.
Liz wearing glasses.
Yeah, so these new masks, these the K N ninety-five, the U N ninety-fives, if you're lucky enough, if I've ever gotten your hands on it before the price skyrocketed, I have a nice clip here. Next slide, please. Oh, budget. We're gonna get into the budget a little more because that is, the budget is not only dollars and cents, it's a value statement in terms of what you value for your community and your schools. So within emphasis on, except through practices, our best practices, as we all know that it's called. Um you have a fiduciary responsibility to the entire community and to the towns that you're elected to represent. Especially with regards to the relationships between members of the city, uh members of your school administration and members of the school community. This is, uh I say this often, I've said it uh for decades, sort of without the kids. Um we sometimes get caught up in doing our jobs. But without the kids, none of us have a job. Sometimes you take a step back and understand that there's a whole community of students here that we all are responsible for, right? And it's important that you use your meeting time effectively, which so far I've seen that you you do um so that you can have a positive impact on the things that impact the kids in their classrooms. Next slide, please. Oh, all right. Um we did hit briefly on board self-assessment, which was on the last slide. Um and that's something that you may want to think about, uh come around superintendent evaluation time. Is there a time that you want to do a self-assessment of your own practices? You know, or not, or is that a time when you all, as of, you know, some of you are relatively new members? Do you want to work through the superintendent evaluation process and then decide, you know, will we set goals for ourselves so that we can track how we're supporting the superintendent in her work improving um the district for our students? Uh more attributes of an effective school committee include having that constant vision of high expectations for the ongoing work for the district. There's a, you need to keep your focus on accountability. Uh things like um leaky pipes, uh expensive repairs come up and we get drawn to them. And we need to understand how they happen and how they won't, how we can ensure they don't happen in the future. That will involve you thinking about budgeting. Um thank God for S R funds, I guess, the stage of the game for you all. Um but so that accountability not needs not only to be on the folks running the district, but again, on your own work and how you support the work of the people running the district. Um effective school committees foster strong relationships. All this work is about really how good of a relationship can be built with our team members here at the floor table and with our team members who have their boots on the ground in schools every single day. Also, with the community at large, you're out there, you meet people at, uh wherever you get your coffee or donuts, Mrs. Murphy's is, I'm still over there because everybody's had a Mrs. Murphy's dough. And they want to know from you. Uh they have kids in the district and uh many people will not um typically stop to compliment you on the wonderful job, the wonderful education your kids are getting in the district because they're happy. But I will bet the last dollar I have um that when somebody has a complaint, if they bump into you and they know you, you're gonna hear about it. Listen, always listen. Um always do what you can to refer those folks to the right person that can solve their problem. Uh you, effective school committees do use data to monitor progress. Um and they understand um typically with the help of administration, unless you're an educator or been an educator, sometimes the data that you see can be overwhelming and hard to understand. Jen and her staff will help you to break that out in ways that it's easy for you to consume and understand how you can support. And most importantly to me, um because I've done this work in a very small community where I was not um a native, shall I say. Um I wasn't always particularly well-liked because not only was I not a native, but I wasn't a fourth or fifth generation um resident of this small community. So it's important to lead um as a united team. Now, that's not to say we always have to agree on everything because we're humans and we will not. Um but we have to agree to collaborate, we have to agree to listen. And sometimes we have to agree to And sometimes we have to agree to disagree if the decisions are made in the best interest of the students in your school building. The next slide, please. The roles, understanding the roles and having respect for the roles. So you are a governance team, you are the board of directors from Southwood, Olive, Bramble School District. And you also need to understand the role of the superintendent so that you understand her and her team's focus on student achievement. I called Jen the other day and she was in the middle, which is classic, right? Classic for a superintendent who ever worked in a school or a school district. There was a crisis situation, so sort of all that planned work stops dead in its tracks. And you address the most important thing in front of you at that time. You have created or someone has created along the way mission and a vision for the district. Sure that you look at it from time to time when you see the budget come to you or when you see student handbooks come to you. It lives in your policy manual. We talked about goal setting and you will work with the superintendent. The superintendent will bring you, you know, proposed goals for each year related to her work in the district. Most of those will be ongoing and living pieces of work as she goes through the things she needs to do in this district for kids. Policy is the, is a big piece of your work. And it's not only those policies that help sort of guide decision-making in the district. But the budget is a value and policy statement in itself. The school committee is the what, the why, and the how much in this district. And you do serve as the bridge between the community and the superintendent, there, there, that's a, that's a fact, whether we we're happy some days we're behind the mask and we have a baseball cap on in the supermarket so we can glide through sometimes the faucet. And then there's those other times when you have more time and you're happy to listen to people who have concerns. You're always representatives elected by your communities and it is always important to take the time to hear people out. People will get from time to time upset about things and again, those are the people you're going to hear from, not the ones who want thank you for the hours you sit behind this table and the hours you prep before the meeting reading materials so that you can understand and just participate, right? Now, the superintendent is the chief administrative and educational officer for the district. Your superintendent is responsible mainly for the day-to-day management of schools, but has authority over all personnel. She supervises principals who are site-based managers, they're supervising staff in their buildings. And superintendent is responsible for implementing the policy that the school committee sets. This committee has a unique opportunity to look at and update your policy. And that's a whole other conversation, but as you do so, remember that policy statements are broad overarching statements to provide direction to the district, right? The superintendent and her team then looks at that policy. Policy J, which covers students, is a big place of space time. The, the section that talks about personnel, they'll spend a good portion of their time determining how do we set protocols or procedures to determine that these policies are being rolled out the way they're intended. Now, the superintendent and her staff need some, need flexibility in implementing those policies from time to time in order to be up to date with like the bargaining agreements, the newest laws related to personnel. And that's why procedure typically lives with the superintendent and her administrative staff. Superintendent and her staff manage the budget, they manage the spending, they will occasionally bring to you requests for transfers, for example, in a typical year where you might not have had grant money, your business manager might have come to you and said, we've saved some money on personnel and now we've had a big water issue in our school. So with some of these savings, we need to transfer money out of our personnel lines into our maintenance lines. Those are the kinds of transfers you'd see. You wouldn't see the superintendent coming to you because she saved money on custodians, let's say. So that now she's able to hire another paraprofessional to support kids. That's a personnel-to-personnel line transfer within one of the major accounts. And she would not need to pump you for that. But if she's switching money between the major account areas, that's where you have oversight. Why do you need additional money for maintenance to pay for our person? So the superintendent is the how, the who, the when, and the where. That balances out what you say, why you say it, and how much will be used on that. Okay, does that make sense? Next slide, please, Amy. So the committee as an extension of the roles, you need to understand that as the committee, your actions take place here at the committee table. Whether it's in subcommittee and then refer back to the board or whether you're making decisions at the full board. No individual committee member has any more power than any other. And no individual school committee can make decisions outside of an open posted meeting or if allowable, in executive session. You govern again through policy decisions, which includes establishing appropriate budgetary allocations to be sure that your policies are, are well funded. And that you're meeting the needs of the district as well, finding the goals that live in your strategic plan. You will engage with the community through interaction. Boy, if you cut a band or basketball or in the sport, this room will be full. If you want to find an English teacher so you can fund sports, you're probably not getting here from anybody, which is kind of a it's a, anyway, it's always a situation I found unique because as a parent, right? I got to experience my kids on the athletic field, from the basketball court. And not only that, but God, I could watch sports all weekend on TV, so I was an expert. Right? I was an expert at that, so folks want to listen to me. But there were not too many opportunities for, for me to see my kids during the school day performing academically. Parents tend to have a little bit more of a hands-off approach because they oftentimes feel intimidated by professional educators in this setting, right? So we need to find, and I'm sure Jen does, opportunities for parents to interact in ways at schools, whether it's a science fair or a coral event, you know, we all love to be part of our kids. That's another way that you, you engage with the community, those are kinds of events that, you know, if you're able, you should show up at. Just, just be a casual relaxed citizen that everybody will look at you as a school city first act. You again are the employer of record for both bargaining units and non-union personnel, so bargaining or contracting with non-union personnel will come through you. But you need to remember you have one employee. That's the superintendent. Are there any questions on that? Saw some eyes, I just want to be sure. You can stop me anywhere along the way if you have a specific question, okay? I tried to keep the slides brief so that we could have more of a conversation, so I'm expecting a lot of questions. As an individual, your role is to contribute at the board table. To come prepared, you know, we know you've spent those hours reading through all that material. And you're ready with thoughtful questions and or prepared to act. Remember, if you act as an individual rather than a board member, I think that most of us have found us in a situation where this could occur at one time or another. You could be having a conversation with someone that you believe is a trusted individual. You could be really sympathetic to their cause. You could truly want to help them and you could say the wrong thing. That person has a different passion for whatever is of concern for them than you do. And you may risk having that conversation misconstrued, having your words misconstrued. And sometimes at the end of the day, when words are misinterpreted, it can encourage insubordination. Always listen, keep your ears open, hear what the person is you. You're going to hear from more people if you do that. And you're going to be sure that concerns, that folks understand that there's a chain of command for concerns. Please go here if you don't receive satisfaction, this is your next step. If you still don't receive satisfaction, please let me know. And if there is any way I can see that or I can help or assist with getting you to the right person, please let me know. If you're having a problem getting through to the superintendent, for example, which have a hard time of the afternoon here in this district. If you do, please let me know and I'll be sure to have the superintendent reach back out to you. Or the appropriate person that the superintendent designates, which can often happen. It could be a situation that someone else in the district is more readily able to handle than the superintendent. So I have this in bold, it must be important. In order to focus on the work of student achievement and building positive relationships, please be thoughtful about what your individual roles are and how they interact. There will be times when the lines blur. Have those conversations with whomever it is, whether it's a fellow school committee member, somebody who chairs a subcommittee. Or if it's something in central administration or one of the schools, have a conversation with the superintendent, reach some common ground and continue to build on that trusting relationship and move forward. You're all here for the same reason. Next slide, please, Amy. Goal setting. Some committees do set goals for themselves and some committees do not. It's always a good idea, it can be a little bit more difficult with new members on the board than it can be with seasoned members. But if you're looking at setting goals, have that conversation with the superintendent, here's the strategic plan. Tell us what you need support with, how can we help you to achieve these goals? It's not a bad place to start. Again, not that you will necessarily always be one hundred percent in agreement, but listen. You can help me because we will need funding to sustain these services that we're providing these these guidance and emotional support services for our students. When the successor money drives up, we're, we're really going to need to think now before that money drives up, how we can sustain this for our kids because it's important. Kids' needs are not going to go away overnight. If we're ever able to unmask and enjoy time with our friends like we once did, seems like almost forever ago. Setting of goals will, are we on slide ten? Yep. Setting goals will always help to keep everybody on track and moving in the same direction. And that's about continuous improvement for what happens in this district. And if you do decide to set goals, as I said, consult with the superintendent. Your goal doesn't have to be a one-year goal, it could be a multi-year goal. It could be that you want to talk about new fields or new athletic facilities or new boiler system. And that is something that will not, again, happen overnight, that's something you're going to have a multi-year plan to tackle. And importantly, setting goals tells your community how you're going to use the resources that they give you to run excellent schools. Next slide, please, Amy. Thank you. So if you look at goal setting and alignment as a pyramid, you start with that strategic plan or district goals. The superintendent sets her goals based on that plan because she needs to accomplish what's listed in that strategic plan. If the school committee sets goals, as I just described, you should do the same. All administrators set their goals based on the strategic plan, the superintendent's goals. Because they need to be aligned and working in the same direction, they're in a boat and they're all rowing. Teacher goals are set based on school improvement plans. And those school improvement plans have broadened strategies listed in your strategic plan. When all of those things are moving in the same direction, students benefit. Right? Our focus is, is on the kids and what best serves their needs. So it's consistency throughout the district. Next slide, please, Amy. And your budget. I really should be the last person to ever talk to anybody about a budget, just for fair disclosure. But I do understand that your budget is a value statement. You fund what is important to you and your communities. And part of your fiduciary responsibility is to appoint the superintendent, the business manager. Have, will have the primary responsibility for managing that budget once you all come to agreement and it is set. It's the job of the school committee to link budget proposals to goals of the district and to ensure that the resources are being used properly over the course of the year. And you do that through signing a warrants and you do that through budget reports that you'll get periodically. You're, you have a fiscal policy section in your policy manual, it is section B. It talks about how the finances will be managed in your district, it's an important section of your policy manual. In fact, I'm sure you've seen recently, Jen has seen some changes probably come across or Amy come across their desk that's come out of MASC and they were just adjustments made based on new legislation. So we at MASC do stay up on policy, we are currently undertaking a complete policy, model policy manual review. And that has to do with some changes in legislation and some direction and some conversations we're having with our attorney general's office on being sure that schools are being equitable, there's equity woven into policies for the students that come to your building every day. You need to be transparent when budgeting and presenting spending to the extent possible. And please be consistent with that funding plan that you've created that your towns have approved for you. Folks are, folks are paying taxes so that they can have excellent schools, among other things, right? Be transparent with the community. And as we all know from our personal lives down to our work and volunteer lives, once the budget's passed, the work is far from over. You need to monitor that budget to make sure that spending stays on track, you're spending it the way you said you would. And then again, look at your financial statements. To me, it's, it's like looking at Chinese. But if I focus and I ask the right questions, I can still understand what's happening and how the money's being spent. And if spending needs do shift, listen to your school district administration. They have your best interests, the kids' best interests and the community's best interests in mind when they, when they make these plans. Next slide, please, Amy. Policy. So in general, policy sets forth the purpose, the organization, and the programs in your district. They should be broad overarching statements. When we go into a district and we talk about policy and we see something that is prescriptive, our first question is always, what happened here? Because something happened that was a controversy and the committee said at the time, we're going to create a policy. Because something happened that was a controversy and the committee said at the time, we're gonna create a policy for this. Usually not necessary, occasionally it works out well. If you remember, when you're creating policy, don't be prescriptive. Because you're not only gonna tie the hands of administration from um district administration, school administration. It's eventually gonna come back to the committee and tie your hands on something too. That's why we are not overly descriptive on policy. Next slide, please. And then we have procedure. A whole new animal. Because as I said earlier, your district administration needs to understand how to fairly and equitably enact that policy. Across the district, across the grades. Um, there is, there are occasions, um. I don't know if it was Jen or somebody else I spoke with the other day about, the fingerprinting policy was a good example. Because seven years ago, it was decided by Desi that we would all be fingerprinting. We work in a school and some other school volunteer or our contractors. However, they also decided, and it was rightly decided, that we would not do away with the board policy. Because we might just corey volunteers or certain vendors. So that became an attachment or a dash R, a regulation related to fingerprinting. That's, that sort of had a legal basis for staying in your policy manual, that's a legal um procedure that your administration cannot waiver from. Perfect, next slide, please. So policy is found in a lot of places, it is not just your policy manual. Um. You can see the list here. Um. Regional agreement would be a great place, past practice can actually be argued legally as a, a policy. Um. But the biggest policy document, I guess, we like you to, to think about from year to year is your budget document. Because it talks again, I know it's repetitive, about the values that you've determined for your community and your schools. You need to fund the things you say are important to you. Um, next, next slide, please, Amy. And here we are, winding back up in the same place we started. Um, because establishing those educational goals, which are written through twenty twenty-three for you already, good document to be familiar with. Um. Is designed to support the work happening in the district directly related to the students in your classrooms. From pre-K to grade twelve and beyond in some cases, right? Your policies help to guide how that, how the district will operate and how to pull out what you have said is important to you. The budget tells your communities what you value in the school district. Um, and they're the ones after all who fund you. I'm in the area of personnel, school committee does hire and evaluate the superintendent. She, she in your case is your one employee. She will come to you with certain hires, as we said, um, the assistant superintendent, school business manager. Director of special education, school physician and nurses. I believe I forgot if you have one, a school attendance officer, it's also one of those advising consent position. Many districts are doing away with those, but you know, when I went to school, like all the matured officers, you know, and if people are hanging out during school hours, you were in big trouble. We have more family and community engagement folks now who follow up on, you know, school attendants, uh school offices, secretaries. The guidance council, tall, holy kids are out, it's a much better system. Um, and you are, of course, the employer of record for collective bargaining. Because you know, you need to understand the finances and how you're spending them when you make agreements. And God forbid anything bad ever happens, you're always in a lawsuit. The one thing nobody ever tells you when you run for a school. So your major responsibility is to hire the right superintendent, right, to help you move the district forward. To, to do the things in the schools that you value as a community. You do evaluate the superintendent's performance. Um, that's why uh Desi has created, or one of the reasons why, but Desi does like to be involved in lots of things in schools, including. Um, how superintendent and teachers will be evaluated and other uh administrators in the district, right? So there's a plan that Desi has created, there are rubrics by which um the superintendent um. Has to create certain goals, professional practice goals, um curriculum and instruction, um family and community engagement. So her goals will be built based on the areas Desi identifies as important. As will all administrators and teachers in the district. Um. As a school committee, you hire and retain the legal counsel. Superintendent most often is the person who works with that legal counsel, but that is your legal counsel. Um, I haven't looked to see if you have a policy that says that you have a spokesperson who questions filter through or not. For instance, if you as an individual never had a question, some committees say that goes through the chair. Some committees, some districts allow that individual members can talk to the legal counsel. After uh running the issue by the chair, for example, you might have it in your section B, which is government's, I think, that one. You do establish compensation through bargaining um and through budgeting. And the next slide, please. Superintendent, your C E O. Um, this is a person you need to have a good relationship with, you need to listen to, you need to talk with. She needs to listen to you and talk with you. That relationship's essential to the work moving forward. Um, superintendent has um authority to manage day-to-day operations within policy and budgetary limitations set by the committee. And they have authority over all school personnel. They determine how to implement that policy through our writing procedures. And the superintendent will initiate the budget proposal to you as a basis to begin your work. Um, once that budget proposal is approved by the school committee, um. The superintendent and her team manage the budget and the spending in the district. If you have oversight how that spending is happening through, you have the warrants and um finance reports. Next slide, please, Amy. One of my favorites. Does anybody have any specific questions that they'd like to talk about? Any questions? Any ideas?
And I don't know that it pertains to anything, and you speak very eloquently. My question, I think it's gonna take a layman's answer. I think, and I'm so new to the committee, but when I'm in a meeting. What are the topics that I can bring up? So for instance, if I'm, if we're in executive session or if the school, you know, um, committee meeting has started.
Mm-hmm.
If I have had a conversation with a parent um on a soccer field and they want, and they're talking about this new. Extracurricular activity that they want to bring up, is that something that I can bring to the school board committee? Because a parent had talked to me about it, does it need to, or should I be informing them that they, say they went through all the chains of command? And now, you know, they wanna bring it to the school committee? Can we talk about that in session?
I don't know. Talk about that. And there's actually a, a whole, we could, a whole nother module on the open meeting line, what you can and cannot do. Um, but in the case of a parent talking to me about um some new idea they have for how to um. Assist, let's say, the soccer team, whether it's a physical plant issue or whether it's a hungry issue. Um, do your best to bring that through the superintendent or the appropriate person on the administrative staff, could be the athletic director. Um, and again, a parent does not have to, to. We're passionate about our children. Um, I served on the school committee and had two kids in the high school at the same time. Um, I was passionate about my kids. And I did have to oftentimes take my hat off to go into the school and say. This has nothing to do with my role in the school committee, but we really need to find a way to resolve this, that won't work for both of us. Right, I'm unhappy, if my kids are unhappy, I'm unhappy, explain to me why I have to accept this. Sometimes I had to agree to disagree because the theory related to me made sense. Wasn't happy, but I had to go home and tell my kid, if we make this exception for you, then, you know, this sort of. Effect happens, right, snowballing effect. Um. We have to listen. Um, you have um superintendent who thus far, you know, has done a good job here in the district. Uh, the fact that you are not under a mandated district improvement plan. Um, is evidence of that, because there's very few districts in the state that are not. Um, and Desi hasn't designed that way, so um it's not an easy thing. Um, have those conversations first with the superintendent. And if you, if you believe and are passionate, be clear with the superintendent that. You know, I'm gonna talk to the chair about this because I think that if we bring this to the board. This is how it fits in our purview and this is how we can make a difference. We'll be upfront about it.
Yeah.
Yep. It's a difficult. It's difficult to bring new topics up in a meeting that are not posted on the agenda. Because you always risk violating, you know, meaning. So um, you might say that um, um. Chair Stevenson, at the next meeting, could we get a topic on the agenda to talk about? Um, re-sodding the soccer field, for example.
Yeah.
And then your conversation would more be around, how can we plan to pay for this? What are the timelines we need to consider based on the use of the field? You know, this whole basis of, of logical things has to take place in your discussion. Does that make sense to you?
It really does, thank you.
I have a, a quick question, it's sort of, it's not, I guess, really related to work, but just a general question, so. We had up here a few days ago. That I can't, I think I'm finishing my third year, I can't think off the top of my head of another time it's happened, but we had a. A wrestling meet that was supposed to happen on Sunday. Like I moved to a Sunday, I mean, I didn't find out about it until a couple of days ago. But uh it was moved on a Wednesday and then uh we didn't find out about it until, we actually, we have a policy that says we can't have events. Something.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think anybody on the committee had a problem with. Changing that. Oh, we had such a time front that there was no way to post a meeting, have the change that. Is there any action you could have taken to do something differently there?
Uh, if the timelines did not fit within the forty-eight hour posting notice, you could not have taken a visual action. Um, there is a provision for emergency meetings that is not, would not, the district attorney's office, the attorney general's office would not find that emergency. Um, and emergency might have been, we had pipes burst and we need to move kids, uh, we need you to understand that this is happening and this is how we're gonna move kids. Um, you know, from Laura Sunderland had a roof caving on their new elementary school back a decade and a half ago and so. I mean, emergencies are very um.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Limited.
Clearly defined, you said official, but you're an unofficial option.
No.
Okay. No, I, I'm just questioning.
You have a policy, so this is why I said, please don't be prescriptive of policies. Now, not so long ago, back in the late nineties and early two thousands, it was not uncommon for districts to have that as a policy. But um we found that in reality, doesn't always work that well. Um.
Hence, we're fixing it tonight.
You're fixing it tonight, uh, it was in my district and I found it to be sometimes infuriating because they wouldn't even let, for example, um. Even though CYO uh played games on Sunday mornings. We couldn't schedule one in our high school gym because we have this policy that said, nothing happens before noon.
And Liz, you mentioned something interesting about the uh positions that the superintendent brings to us for advising consent. Um, at least from what I've seen historically, and I know Jen and I talked about this at one of our meetings. It's been tradition for a little while here that the school committee would approve contracts for pretty much everybody. Um, that were, I guess we call them, same to contract, right? Do we need to do that or is that up to the superintendent to make those decisions? Or is it a best practice to, to do it or not do it?
I will tell you that the best practice would be if you have a new person coming into the position. Is to look at the contract, um have a little back and forth with that person, that's where you um would have some bargaining leverage. Once you have an existing contract, say with the school business person. Um, what's to approve the acquisition contract? You, where you would approve, sort of that would then be more monetary, going forward it is, what are you kind of possible living raises you're gonna get.
Yeah.
And um best practice would be, the superintendent would talk to you with budget time around. This is the, this is the fund that I'm going to need. Um, once my administrative team members, my middle managers, my principals, anybody on an individual contract will be evaluated. And based on their evaluation, there'll be sort of a range of the kind of, you know, it could be anywhere from one to three percent that they'll get. But that'll be based on their evaluation, now since you wouldn't be pretty to their evaluation. Um, and if, you know, you did that kind of thing and then you approved it in public sessions, or if everybody. Would figure it out, would understand what the evaluation looked like, right? So that's where it's best in the committee's case to say. Um, okay, we understand you need this money and it's based on anywhere from a one to three. Um, but can we agree that if, you know, this pot is um. Um, there's a good piece of it that's unspent. You know, at the end of the year, how are we gonna spend that? How, how can we use that money now to do something to support kids or something else that needs to happen?
So we would therefore not need to approve those contracts at the. Fourth level or we do?
I think once that, and I think all my colleagues would agree with this on best practice. Once you have an established contract with an individual. Unless there's a particular reason that the superintendent needs it looked at, like there's an additional benefit that. This individual is asking for that isn't in other contracts. That's the kind of thing that if she thought it had merit, she'd come to an executive session today and that's the kind of thing you need to look at, like. That's not the only, Steve's not the only person who's gonna want that, that we approve it. So if we approve it, well, how much money does that cost us and what does it look like over a course of years? Um. That would be our recommendation on best practice. Does that make sense? Because you're not typically changing contract language from here on out. It's, it's a, it's a yearly raise typically that happens, that you approve through the budget process. Now, if you have approved a pot of money, that assumes three percent for everybody. You know, at the end of the year, wh- what can we do with this money that's left that makes sense for our students, right? Or, you know, that's an agreement you all work out with the superintendent. It kind of gets to the point now though where everybody has to be evaluated based on. The same sort of set of, the same rubric, same set of standards. That it's not that um it's supposed to figure out who might be performing better or not as good as another pupil. If those, because once you approve it in executive, you have to come out and prove it in public.
Yeah.
That it's a public document. Right, Jen?
Right.
I mean, public records have us coming and going. Uh, districts are overwhelmed, Amy could probably tell you, sometimes you get the most awful, all public records requests. That takes time, it's insane sometimes, you know? Um, and sometimes it's to the degree that you now have to figure out what you're gonna charge the person for providing information. Because it's taking me that much time to put it together. So if you don't have to make it a public record. Why?
Perfect. Any other question?
You know, um. I, if I um had been out to a meeting um between October and now, I probably would have remembered to bring some business cards so that you have my, you know, phone number. However, um you. However, you can find, you know, Amy knows how to reach me, Jen knows how to reach me. My uh email and private information is on M E S C website. Um, we are there to help you with your problems, concerns, questions, whether it's individual or any question. Um, give us a call and if it's something I can't answer, someone in our association. That's what we're here for. We're here for you.
Thank you so much for your time today. It was very helpful.
Thank you for getting me out of Ohio. I'm going to stop at the grocery store.
And very kindly about to go over my goals.
And thank you because you, um, the students, you did a good presentation tonight. It's nice to hear that. Thanks.
All right. Superintendent Willard.
So mid-year goals, uh, I just wanted to go over, I intended them up in forehand and I gave you an update at the bottom of where I am. Uh, under goal one, we're well on our way this year with our Hill for Literacy PD. Um, we just had a data meeting this morning uh with the coaches, the director of student services, the director of personnel instruction um and a couple of the building principals. And so we're looking over some mid-year data and I'm going to be having uh grade level meetings with all the building principals to look at their grade level data and to talk about next steps. And we will be doing a presentation to school committee. Um, Rob, I really liked the idea that you gave us at the beginning, like we're doing an executive summary, which kind of just summarizes everything so we don't have to go line by line, but tells you um where we're really seeing a lot of great things and where we're going to add some additional emphasis. Um, and goal two, the evaluation cycle. Um, this year I've actually met with principals more than usual. I don't know if it's just because of COVID or or whatever reason, but I've been in the buildings quite a bit, meeting with the building principals, talking about data. Um, Jenny and I have said it for years that we are really going to be pushing the data and this was not a strong data-informed school district when I got here. Um, it's been a, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it's been a really slow change in the district. It's um trying to find just the right data that the teachers feel is useful for them. So we talked about that this morning in our meeting. Um, but I have met with each principal already three times regarding their goals, progress and uh check-ins and doing some learning walks with them as well. Uh, effective communication. Again, um, it's been another challenging year with COVID. When I wrote the goals, I did not think this year was going to be as COVID-centric as it has been. Um, but it, it seems like we're dealing with COVID just as much this year as we did last year. So I do continue to keep the chair updated on emergencies uh as they arise during the day. For example, we go into a lockdown, if a pipe broke or if, you know, we, we really, I communicate directly to the chair. Um, just so if he sees something or if there's police officers at the building, he knows what's going on. Our RAMES-BELOW initiative um is probably the most exciting thing for me so far in this whole district. I mean, this year in this district, um, we see children wearing gear that has the hashtag RAMES-BELOW. Um, they have their stickers. Um, they're talking about it and doing things in their own way. But the main thing is we're really starting to see kids treat others with respect and a much more of a general understanding of differences and um knowing that the school is a place for everybody. Um, and so when our issues do arise, we, we had our connections group speak to you last year. Um, and our students are actually being trained on peer mediation, which is much more effective than when administrators get involved and we as adults try to solve problems. Um, we are raising and creating problem solvers in this school district. They're not always going to have adult supervision. So it's super important to be able to work with our students on how to have a productive conversation and how to listen to both sides and how to come to a resolution that everybody can agree with. And um if nothing else, that's been a huge push this year and I really think the RAMES-BELOW looks different in all three schools, but feels good in all three schools. Um, the last one is about the social emotional learning. Um, and wow, what did I just do? Hold on. Oh, sorry. So goal four throughout the year about the COVID, um, the school environment focuses on safety and a continuous plan for students that their social emotional needs. So as you know, we continue to share COVID data on a weekly basis with our families and I report out at every school committee meeting. Um, the exciting thing this year is we've really been able to have very few interruptions in our extracurricular activities and our athletics. Um, we did incorporate test and stay, one of the first districts to get that up and running. And uh we were able to keep most of our students in school. And we also realized with the tests and stay that although they were identified as a close contact, there was very few to single digits of kids who were part of test and stay who'd been tested positive for COVID. So I would probably say it's less than five. Um, we also continue to update our isolation and quarantine practices and communicate that to families. Uh, answer parents' emails when they have questions about the quarantining and the isolation because it's very confusing. Um, and we have begun our administrative PD work on equity and working on creating our district context on why this work is necessary to begin our plan development. I have to say, of all of the, my goals, this is the one I feel like I'm the furthest behind on and I think it's just because of the necessity of COVID and that is still consuming so much of our day. Um, that I wish I was further along with um developing our context. Uh, but we are going to be, continue to work on it with a collaborative and to figure out our why and understanding our community um and creating a plan uh for equity in that sense of belonging in our district. Um, and that is an honest tell you what's going well and I'll tell you where I wish I could have pushed it along. But I, I always have a saying, you go slow to go fast. Real change takes time and um it's not going to happen if we just keep barreling along without having people, you know, joining us on that process. So that is where we are.
Any, we don't need to make any adjustments? You feel like these are all still attainable for the year?
Um, I would say that's where um it talks about a long-range plan for creating equity in a sense of belonging. I'm not quite sure I'm going to have a long-range plan. My goal now is really just trying to be able to articulate and communicate um our context of why this work is so important. And uh I was on a uh webinar with uh Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents last Thursday. It was our winter meeting, um but it was all virtual. And it is work with a ready group at the state level, the Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Team. And um they just came out with a, a document that kind of is like the blueprint on how to start doing this work in your district. Um, and really, as with everything, you have to have that solid foundation and we really have to know why it is that we're doing this work here. And it can't be just me sitting in my office deciding why we're doing this work. It really needs to be some stakeholder groups. It really needs to be some soliciting of information. And so I think if the end, by the end of the year, if I can have our context down, that'll help us develop our long range. But um I think it was a lofty goal to have a, think I'd have a long-range plan for creating equity in a sense of belonging. But I think I'd rather, I, I have a statement. I call it process versus product. A product is something we just get done um without a lot of learning and we check our logs. But the process is where the learning all takes place. And so I really feel like this context is a process. And once we get the learning down and we know our why, everything else will fall into place. I feel like if I rush the context, then it will be addressing what we actually need to be addressing.
Thank you very much. All right, on to policies. Now, we are, first one up is IHBGA. This is our third reading of the Southwell um mentorship participation in extracurricular activities. Um, should be voting on this tonight. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Anyone on this policy? Only thing I would say, Jen, it is on there in anticipation that hopefully this passes this evening. Um, obviously with the announcement that the uh school play is looking at auditions and I know we've got spring sports signups on their way. Is there a if, if this passes tonight, is there a way that we can get a communication out to the homeschool parents to indicate that this is now an option that they can look into?
I would put it on Facebook.
Yeah.
What?
Whatever you come to.
Well, no, I just wanted.
That's like, I think we should send them to our, our. Say, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have email addresses.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, I thi- I think we need to do something to let them know that it's an option. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Or anybody got any questions last before we move on? All right. Number two is ADC, the tobacco products on school premises. Uh, this is the third reading for that, so this is going to be on our action item here in a couple of minutes. Um, anybody got any questions on this one? Right? Last one up for tonight is JJ. This is the little issue that was touched on here a couple of minutes ago. This is co-curricular and extracurricular activities. It's a first reading, but if you look, we're going to look at an action item here to waive the three readings. Um, what we're looking to do here is actually eliminate number five. And we're going to move number six to number five. Number five is the language that we ran into the issue with the rest of the team this weekend. It indicates that no activity will be done before noon on Sunday. Um, as Liz actually mentioned, um CYO, which is sponsored obviously by the DICE Springfield, uh actually has games on Sunday mornings. So um it looks like over the years, this is not necessarily gone by the wayside, but certainly not at a, at a level of uh it's a level of interest as, as was once before. Um, so we're looking to remove number five, move number six up to five, waive the three readings and adopt this change to see. I know it's a lot, but uh that will, that will rectify the situation we're in this weekend and obviously any sort of issues that we've got going forward. Anybody any questions on that or comments? All right. Superintendent, we all actually. Um, I don't know. I wish. Amy, can we add an action item to approve all the action items? No, I don't. All right, Superintendent Willard, we need your best Toyota uh sales on speech.
My teacher voice. Move to approve the revised policy, IHBGA homeschool participation in SRS athletics. Recommended.
Yeah, I, I just, I do, I, I just nominated somebody. Um, any questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to approve motion? Amy, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the revised policy, ADC tobacco products on school premises prohibited, recommended.
Second. Questions on the tobacco policy? That would be questions. Can I show hands to approve the motion? Amy, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to waive the three readings and accept the revised policy, JJ co-curricular and extracurricular activities recommended.
Questions on this one? I need to show a hand to show. Okay, Amy, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the annual town report for the Southwood Town and Granville Regional School District for FY twenty-one to be submitted to each of the three member towns, recommended.
Second. And so this is the one that, uh that's the one that has Superintendent Willard. Yeah, that's what my question.
No, it's last year. So I had to write about all of COVID last year and the MOAs. It's all about last school year. So next year is that you're going to approve is going to be based on this year of school. I know, it's so confusing. I actually made a mistake once doing it.
So if it was from last year, is there a reason that we've got the school calendar for this year on there? Is that a whoopsie or is that just from? It's because of how fiscal year. Yeah, okay. All right. It's, as long as they know what they're getting and we're giving it to the system like that. All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Amy, let the record show the motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the outstate field trip for Southwood Regional School to the New England Air Museum in Windsor Locks, Connecticut. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year recommended.
Questions on this? This appears to be right flight, right?
Yes.
All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Amy, let the record show the much passes five zero zero.
Move to approve home education proposals, HS twenty-one, twenty-two dash sixty-six to HS dash twenty-one, twenty-two dash sixty-eight, recommended.
Questions on this? I need to show hands to accept the motion. Motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the FY twenty-two Student Opportunity Act Amendment for the Southwood Town and Granville Regional School District, recommended.
Second. I'm going to give up my job. Any questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three district calendar revision one point two, recommended.
Second. On the calendar, what was the revision? What's the?
It says tracking number. So he updated it.
So was there, was there a difference that we did between version one point one?
That's an internal tracking number. But sometimes it has the accepted counter.
Okay.
And it shows the way.
Makes it easier for us. All right. Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Motion passes five zero zero.
Move to approve setting the mileage reimbursement rate equal to the current federal reimbursement rate and adjusting it accordingly as the federal rate changes, recommended.
Second. Any questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? It passes five zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwood Regional School fundraiser competitive coin drive proceeds to benefit interact class, recommended.
Second. Questions on the fundraiser? I need to show a hand to accept the motion. Passes five zero zero.
Move to award a contract for the Woodland School Sidewalk Replacement Project in the amount of eighty-one thousand seven hundred dollars to Kimporo Construction Company Incorporated of Londo, Mass. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder. The bid was submitted in conformance with the requirements of the bidding documents. The contract award is contingent upon timely submission by Kimporo Construction Company Incorporated of a satisfactory certificate of insurance and the required performance and payment bonds to the Southwood Town and Granville Regional School District, recommended.
Second. Any questions on this?
Budget for this year is, is it in our capital? Our project's actually brought out over a couple of years. The uh we have sufficient funds in the capital funding and uh contingency may have to be covered out of revolving account or some other some other account.
How, how, how did we do with what we thought it was going to be and what the bid came?
Well, last year we rejected the only bid we received back in summer of twenty-one. This bid was about half that This bid was about half that. Price that we got.
That was a good decision.
Yeah. Uh, there were. Eight bidders, uh.
All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Passes five zero zero. Superintendent Willard.
Okay, so currently from data update, uh, January ninth through January twenty second. Um, we've had a hundred eighty seven COVID cases in Southwick, which is down from two oh eight from the previous time I reported. On Grandville cases are down to twenty one from the thirty one that I reported last time. Talent is up to two from the one that I was reported on last time.
Yeah, Ken doesn't believe the certain, the the the.
The data.
The data, no. He wants to recount.
So the SRS vaccination rates, um, we we are slowly inching up there, we're at fifty eight percent. Powdermill School started at twenty nine percent, they're at forty one percent. And Woodland School started at twenty five percent and they are at thirty one percent.
So you get your job, you got some work to do.
So in the same breath of, uh, COVID, um, we at the beginning of the year adopted test and stay. Which allowed, uh, students who are close contacts of students in the school. To be able to test and stay at school. Uh, the state is now updating their testing program guidance, um, as of January eighteen. And under this guidance, districts and schools may select this new option. Within the testing program to provide weekly at home rapid antigen tests to students and staff. And now we can discontinue top contact tracing and the test and stay protocol. So the nurses met last week and we are moving forward with it, I filled out the application today, so we are now in the DESI queue. Um, what this means is we had to sign up for either pool testing or symptomatic testing. Now that we are not no longer doing tests and say and to be able to be eligible for this. So if you had already signed up your child for test and stay. They are automatically, um, signed up for symptomatic testing at school. So now if the student comes down to the nurse and they say I have these symptoms that are COVID like, our nurse will test them right then and there. And if they're positive, clearly they go home, if they're negative, if there's dick and they wanna go home, they can go home, but we know that they're negative. So, but that's what's one change. The other change is in you have to send out and the nurse is working on it right now, what we call an opt in form. So we are going to be sending a letter explaining that every other week. We are going to be setting, sending home a test kit with two tests in it. If you opt in for it, and we're going to be asking families to test their kids on Sunday night. Uh, before they come to school, and if it's a positive, we just ask them to report it to the school nurse. Uh, we will be passing out tests weekly because one week we will be passing out a double set of tests to staff. Following week will be a double set of tests to students, so each kit that you get will last you two weeks. Uh, I don't have a start date yet, again, because I just submitted the application today, because we were not. Part, we were not full testing nor were we symptomatic testing. Um, and so the nurses feel that this is a much better direction to go in, it's gonna free up their time with contact tracing. And I have notified the board of health today, and he just said anything that he can do to help, he thinks it's a great idea. So that is where we are and where we are moving to.
We're testing get like every kid, whether you're simple or not on Sunday.
Sunday night, that's what we're asking.
Parents choose that.
It's an opt in, you know, the the test doesn't come home to the kids.
Okay.
They don't have to do it, it it, for those of you that didn't get a chance to read that information. I I think, I think it's a great move by the state, I mean, what they found obviously from the data. Was that when they did the test instead, they found such a small minority of transmission between students that it wasn't worth. And and this is a better option for everyone to try to keep a good eye on this, so. Certainly would encourage everybody to opt into that.
And then people who have been to do the test, they consent what happens.
And so, yeah, so for example, your child comes down to the nurse and they're sent, and they didn't consent for test and say. It, they would have to call you, you'd have to come in and sign the, uh. Or permission form because we know there's a twenty four hour lag in the electronic. Um, I would just recommend anybody, if they haven't signed up already, just sign up for test and say in symptomatic testing. Cause the only time they will be tested and the nurses will call is if they come down with the symptoms of, um. Uh, COVID, and we can test them right there, you don't have to worry about going to the doctor and doing all that, but we can provide that service right here.
You had a good response, Jen, we sent that last.
Yes.
It might be worth, are are you planning on sending out sort of an update to everybody and?
Yes.
These options and maybe kind of.
I will, we're gonna put the electronic link in there for people to re-sign up. And they're creating, um, Marcia is working and creating a Google document right now so that, um. It can keep track of all the students who opt in.
If they get that email, you you get the hyperlink right there, right in the email, they can click on it there. That would be, I think, very helpful.
I have one follow up question.
Sure.
There's two children and only one test positive. On a Sunday night, does the second child also have to quarantine at home or can they come to school?
And do tests.
Right, no, it would, they would, if they are a close contact, you have to follow definition of close. So they would have to.
Right, so that's.
Unless you're vaccinated, they can come to school. Right, but if it's a close contact at school, they can stay and test and stay regardless of vaccine.
No test and stay.
We're, they're eliminating test and stay.
One of your kids is positive, but one of the. Test or whatever, you have to then be able to say that they can be completely separated in your house, which is very difficult and. There are all sorts of things.
Right, and it is interesting because we, our nurses have been phenomenal, I've heard a lot of superintendents talking. Our nurses have been phenomenal in tracking the students. And where they got the COVID from, and it's amazing how much it is spread in-house and not via school. It, the the data is alarming.
I mean.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully, Commissioner, we'll see that and maybe we can have an optional mask policy.
Don't feel like you guys have to stay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kidding.
So.
Yeah, yeah, we're good, I've been keeping track.
All right, I just got. Ten, ten AM left and I'm like.
No, I would let them, I would not let them leave, cause then the meeting couldn't end. Mister Presnel.
I'm good.
Now's the time to hit us with all these challenging financial things, cause you only got four of us here, seven.
I promise not to do that, Mr. Carroll, you never take advantage of that. Um, so following up on some of the points that, uh, uh, this was making. Regarding school community responsibility budget being one of the most notable ones. Um, we put together this FY twenty three budget approval timeline. Uh, we're, we're still in the rudiment rudimentary, uh, stage of developing the budget, we do have some of our. Fixed costs in the non-salaried town reach, um, it's possible. Uh, so that, some of that's coming into focus, the state, uh, governor released this budget proposal for FY twenty three last week. Uh, which is immediately followed the next day by DESI's, uh. Chapter seventy foundation budget documents as well as the OR's, uh, charity sheet. So we know what, what we're getting based on the governor's budget in terms of state revenues. Uh, we know what's the minimum local contributions are for the three towns. At least based on the governor's number, those will likely change, but we, they won't change until we have to adopt a a budget typically. So, uh, so some of these things are are coming into focus, they cast in stone. And then, um, we'll be working on all the things that have variability presenting that initially for the finance subcommittee. And then to the, to the committee, so, uh, you should have in your package, say, I suggested budget approval timeline. Which would be on March first, you can, uh. Granted, the finance subcommittee will see some documents prior to this, but on March first, the full committee, it's the presentation of the grant budgets. Uh, we're obligated, for those of you who are newer to hold the public budget hearing. And typically, I'm doing that in the middle part of March. Uh, kind of the approval, uh, process is sort of what drives a lot of the, uh, the dates here. That is, we have to have a, you know, food budget to the three pounds by April first for the regional limit. Um, so by the middle of March, we are public budget hearing, and then a couple weeks later. Uh, suggested on the twenty ninth of March. Have a, uh, a school committee meeting where the committee would adopt, take take action on off the budget. So you have opportunity between March first and the end of March to come back with. Critique or suggested changes, adding funding here, taking funding away there. Um, and then, and then getting the budget adopted by committee on the thirty first. It then goes to the, to the three pounds, um, and they. Include that on their annual town meeting warrants, their annual town meetings take place in May. Uh, usually the middle part of May, sometimes on the same night for.
Grandville.
Jen and I should have the split and each cover, uh, cover our own account. Uh, so that's what we're, we're suggesting. I think Amy, is this call for, uh, modifying a, a meeting?
Yes.
In March.
Yep. Well, three people that aren't here don't like it. Well, you know, if you get to staying, there's more of you.
I do wanna say, um, that the inflation rate was five point nine percent. I, like the budget roundtable, I did tell the, uh, towns that it was gonna be anywhere, anywhere between four and six percent, so it was five point nine percent. However, they did cap the foundation budget at four point five percent for the inflation rate. And even with it being capped, the middle, even with the twenty student, um. Decline in enrollment from previous fiscal year to this fiscal year, uh, as I. Forewarned, minimal local contributions, um, went up in two of our towns. Random, I mean, Holland did see a slight decrease. Uh, but Southwick saw a very significant increase to their minimal local contribution, how much was it?
Uh, based on what it was, what we established, governor's number early on and and a credit that was built. Then the legislation they took away, so it really shouldn't have had the benefit of the credit. It's a five hundred fifty five thousand dollar increase. Southwick's required.
Required, that's the minimum.
Over what will be since.
For the select ones happy.
Well, yeah.
We warned them.
You think, yes.
I, I, I will be as honest as I can, this information comes from down and I try not to, you know, scare anybody, but, um.
Yeah, the effect that the inflation rate impact the Student Opportunity Act, which drives up the foundation budget. Doesn't necessarily give us any additional state aid for that.
Right.
But that, that, the foundation budget went up by almost one twenty three million dollars without declining enrollment twenty.
Everything, so, pretty significant. Wow. Well, that's cheaper, that's cheaper than the doomsday model that you're talking about, so. All right, well, after that, exciting and such positive work, Steve, thank you so much.
Welcome.
All right, uh, subcommittees and liaisons, does anybody have anything that's popped up that they need to talk about, let's try it that way.
Just started the teacher negotiation, so opening salvos today, I guess. Uh, so, I mean, we we scheduled, I think we've got a meeting in the end of, uh, middle of February, Valentine's Day and then. Uh, yeah, just to start.
Anything from the technology?
We went over it the last time.
I I'm just checking, dude. I mean, I know Amy checked, there's at least three people that have hung in there with us, so they may wanna know if there's an update.
Uh, there is no update, yes.
You guys are active.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, public comment, there's nobody here, so we're gonna move on to the next section, old business, Zippo, new business. All right, so we've got a, I talked to Amy, I think I talked to Amy about this, Amy, you and I talked about the break, the change becoming meetings. So we wanna add a meeting on the twenty ninth, we will, of March, we wanna cancel the meeting on Tuesday, fifth of April.
Okay.
Are you?
I just wanna make sure I'm not.
All right, add a meeting on the twelfth and cancel the meeting on the nineteenth. We're just kinda shifting.
Say it one more time.
The only meeting in April is on, uh, twelve.
No, yes, right, only on the twelfth. We're adding a meeting in March.
And the one.
And we're moving one of the meetings, basically canceling the two meetings in April, putting one in the between. Moving the other one to March twenty ninth.
Because we have to have the budget approved by April.
Right. And with the approval timeline that. Mister President so eloquently outlined, you need to move this.
None of the.
Yeah.
Well, we're not having it.
We're not having.
That's why I'm like, well, now it's not an equal vacation, that's great.
All right, second item on there is athletics ad hoc. Um, just giving, that's something that I brought up. Liz kinda talked a little bit about where it's nice for the community to sort of get together and work together as a community, this is sort of my attempt to try to. Get the right stakeholders in the right spot to solve some longstanding athletic type issues that we've had in the town. And since we've already sort of talked about in policies or in the. Finding a subcommittee that we're, we're looking at potentially, we're looking to add something to the budget where we have a consultant. In regular terms, Steve, sort of somebody to look at what what we might need to do to sort of upgrade, like the bleachers, maybe get some portable lights. The baseball field's obviously on that, um, this ad hoc athletic committee that I wanna put together, we'll vote on next meeting to sort of do it. Um, I'm looking, I I'm certainly looking to be on the committee, if I have one or two other. School committee members that wanna do that, that's great, um, I've already had a conversation with Superintendent Willard about this, she thought it was a great idea. I talked to Mister Park, to Mister Trumell, um, he's sitting himself and possibly Mister Whitecanner on there. Um, I brought this up to the Southwick Rec Center, they're gonna have two members of that, um, board be part of this committee. And I've already had conversations with, um, one of the members of the Park and Rec Committee, I'm looking to talk to the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee. We've got the right people, right? No, it it's, actually, Mister President, I tried to do part of this about three, four years ago and it just, we we couldn't get any traction. Um, but I think we've got the right timing to be able to do this, and one of the, one of the hopes is that obviously from a fiscal perspective. One of, one of the options that are on the table is, we know we've gotta do some significant repairs to the baseball area. Do we, do we take that money? Or do we take advantage of a wonderful park that we have six hundred yards away, kind of work together as a town? And find a solution that's the best for the kids, that helps the town, helps the kids, helps the district. Rec Center has already indicated that they, that they're willing to help out from mowing and and kind of working together, so. That's what we're looking to be able to do, and we'll, I guess we'll have a action item next meeting to sort of put this together, but that's the purpose of it. And everybody that I spoke to so far seems to think that this is a fairly good idea to try, so we're gonna give it a shot. We gotta get questions. With that being said, I don't know what's the length of the longest meeting, this is. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Second, all right, all in favor, show of hands, Amy, motion passes four zero zero, we can end the meeting. Thank you, everyone.